And so we are operating remotely under state law. And all votes will be taken by roll call. And we asked that if you're not speaking, that you are muted. With that, start the meeting. Citizen's statements and petitions, are there any? No. Correspondents to the board. I think we had any for this meeting. Any members had anything come through to them?
No.
Just the update on Maury Street, which we can probably defer to the next meeting because there's going to be some time in between.
Sounds good. Thank you. Okay, consider fire department donation. Turn it over to Chief Kessel.
Yes, thank you. We're going to just give you a couple of minutes background on these donations because they are a significant amount. But as you know, you know, one of the emphasis that we've done over the last couple of years has been training and we kind of evolved from doing basic level training to more advanced training. We don't get a lot of fires, which are high risk things. But because they're low frequency, it really elevates that risk when we do get them. And so we were looking for ways to try and improve that training. Deputy Jason Bangma is very strong in the training area. And he's had an idea that we'll just let him briefly explain. And firefighter Morganti, who is relatively new to us, took an initiative to contact his company and ended up arranging for these. So with that, I'll turn it over to Deputy Bangma.
So I've been getting creative with trainings. We have multiple rooms set up with pallets for search and use hose advancement and stuff like that. I mentioned to firefighter Morganti that one of my goals was to get a container to do live burns in. It's pretty much just a basic shipping container, but we can have class A fires in it and actually feel real heat and extinguish real fires. When I mentioned it to him, his company actually uses them. So he took it upon himself to ask his boss if they would have a donation and.
Yeah, I reached out to the company requesting, you know, old containers or whatever he had available. And he instead decided that he was going to make the donation of, you know, the checks themselves for us to purchase containers that we would that would be more beneficial for us to use.
So there are two entities here. One is the company that firefighter Morganti actually works for. And and within the the corporate conglomerate, I guess of that company, they do have a charitable foundation. And in working with treasurer collector, Dodi Kersey, to make sure that the town could accept what's essentially a donation. Is a charitable organization. They were able to make that work. And so MNX Utility Company and the Deveraux Charitable Foundation Trust both gave us checks for $5,000.
That is greatly appreciated. I think that my mind, anytime we receive a donation, we're we're unlikely to deny that donation. So again, thank you to those two companies for contributing and recognizing the value of our our fire department. Do any members have comments?
I think it's great. Yeah, this is, this will be great and a great asset for the fire department to be able to do their, those live burns. Nice job, guys. Thank you.
No question, training is vital and that's great that these folks stepped up to to give you the money to get the tools you need. It's appreciated.
Yes. With that, I will accept a motion.
I move to accept a $5,000 donation from the MNX Utility Company and $5,000 donation from the Deveraux Charitable Foundation Trust made to the Men and Fire Department for the purposes of acquiring containers for fire department training purposes.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Tenio, I.
Morali, I.
Real I. Excellent. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, here we have discuss, consider Conservation Commission appointments. Appointment. So we have an opening that came up from our previous meeting where we made appointments. There was a member of the Conservation Commission who had not reached out directly to our office to inform us that he had interest in being reappointed. And therefore was not reappointed. But later we found out that he did express interest in a reappointment. We have had a couple of people that have been interested in filling the role on the Conservation Commission. We extended invites to Mr. Bob Sweet, Ms. Susan Calhounan. And Susan, I have a terrible time pronouncing your name. I don't know what it is.
Everybody does. Don't worry.
I want to say Callahan and then it's like it switches up the the letters there. But anyway, and that Mr. Mr. Bill Ayton was also invited to to come tonight. I don't see him on the list on the meeting. But what we'd like to do is give each of you the opportunity to tell us about yourself, why you want to be on the commission. And and then we'll we'll be able to ask you some questions and we will go from there. So why don't we start with Susan?
Hey, guys. So good. How you doing? Good, good. So I am a licensed professional geologist. I started my career in oil and gas. I switched over to environmental consulting about 20 years ago. And I've been doing that ever since. I'm also a lead teaching assistant at Harvard for their sustainability program. And I also, um, right now I'm an environmental consultant as well for doing that. I've had lots of volunteer opportunities along the way, mostly through all the contacts I've made at Harvard. I worked for Alexander Cousteau. I work for the Center for Health and Environment right now. I work for I helped launch the Climate Mobilization. I work for Protect Our Winters and whatnot. You know, and then I was networking one day and a friend of mine who lives over in Arlington was telling me how she got involved with her Conservation Commission and how she was getting involved with the MVP grants and helping with resiliency plans and whatnot, you know, and it really sort of sparked my interest. And I've been living here for about 20 years now, and I thought maybe I should look at doing something a little bit more local where I have been living. My kids just went through the school system. One just graduated. And sorry about that. Something has popped up on this thing. And can you hear that? I hope not. Update now. So yeah, I wanted to, you know, do something a little bit more local. You know, I'm still doing a little bit bits and pieces of those other things, but that's pretty much it. I have lots of relationships as regulatory authorities, Mast EP and the EPA. I do a lot of federal work right now with the Army and the Navy, mostly Navy. High level permitting for the Army Corps, Coast Guard. You know, NEPA, EPA, stuff of that nature, and as well as the typical local town and OYS and whatnot. So lots of experience there. So yeah, so it's pretty good. So that's basically why I was interested. I actually ran into Sue. Forget me, can't forget his name, but he was at the community garden and he was telling me that he was on it, et cetera, et cetera. So forgetting his name. He works at Super.
Probably Emilio.
Yes, yeah, that's right. Yep.
Well, yeah, and thank you, Susan. You know, the the MVP program is something that we've become part of fairly recently. And I really think that the Commonwealth has really put an emphasis on being a part of that program and making funds available for communities. And you really, you know, we went through a workshop and it was really eye opening at how vulnerable Menden is and where the areas that we need to really focus on. So I'm glad that you are familiar with that program.
Yeah, I, you know, I have a master of sustainability, environmental as well, management as well. So very familiar with all that, a lot of unpublished authors, so lots of experience in that arena too. So it'd be very cool to be able to help out, you know, in those those areas. So.
All right, any other question? Comments from board members? We will move over.
Actually, Mark, if I could just ask one question.
Go right ahead.
Susan, do you, is there, there anything in your, in your studies, your employment, or any of your endeavors that you think would be any kind of a conflict with serving on the Conservation Commission in Menden?
Um, no, nope.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mr. Sweet.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. That was an impressive speech, I have to say. I, I can't compare to that. I mean, Susan has all the qualifications. The only thing I want is what's best for the town of Menden. And, you know, I have knowledge in conservation. I have some of the books for soil erosion control. I'm willing to help in any way I can. But I have to say, if Susan is interested in this, she's the right person for the job. She has all the qualifications. So I support her. Well, if you guys want to, but I'm for her. Sign her up.
Well, that is a, that is an interesting take on something. I've never quite seen that. But, um, you know, that's the true community character that that Menden has is, you know, we're all looking to do what's best for for Menden. And when we know someone's qualified for a position, we support that. So I appreciate that, Bob.
Now, like I said, I mean, I'm here. If you guys need somebody, believe me, I'm willing and able. I have no problem with training. If any training is available that I can, I can take, I'll be happy to do it. If there's somebody that's better qualified and and able to do the job, then by all means. You know, that's, that's the person you should choose.
Great.
So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Absolutely. Appreciate you coming. Okay, is Mr. Ayton on this? Not hearing anything. So I can say from my point of view, Susan is is very much qualified to serve on the Conservation Commission. She has been interested in for some time now and has consistently been keeping up with asking me if there's availability. And has attended Conservation Commission meetings, which shows me that she is taking initiative to prepare herself to join the commission. So comments from board members?
I just, I just have a comment on this whole procedure. Is this how we're, is this how we're going to do it now? Like, what is the procedure? What was the cutoff date for Bill to tell us? Like, what, do we have a drop dead date on any of that paperwork? I mean, and I bring this up because Bill has volunteered on the Conservation Commission for, I believe, since the Conservation Commission was developed. He, I do know that he's not the most technically savvy person. Didn't attend some meetings this past year or going through these remote meetings because he likely had trouble. I can't speak for him. That's what I'm, I'm guessing and somewhat being told. I haven't spoken to him directly other than with the information that we got that he did, he did want to be reappointed and it was an oversight. So, uh, you know, are we going to take somebody that's volunteered on the Concom? Now, Susan, I'm not taking anything away from your resume. That's you're overly qualified to be on our Conservation Commission. But there's also something to be said for somebody that's been on our conservation and knows the town in and out of all of our conservation land and wetlands and has that that local intimate knowledge too. That's also served us for so long. And now we're just going to kind of say, well, we didn't get your thing back in time that didn't have a deadline on it and he's still appointed until today, right? So and and every other person responded that they wanted to be there on on any reappointed position and and was reappointed automatically. So we either need to streamline our process and make it very specific with drop dead dates and whatnot. If we're going to do things like this in the future, or every position is open. Maybe that's, that's the way we need to do it, that every position is just open. Anybody can apply. There's no reappointments. Everybody has to come in and talk every year. Because I just feel like we have this is just an odd situation that we're in. And again, I, again, I so with the others, that's all.
Yeah, I understand that that this has been a a little different than normal, not necessarily the fact that when we don't hear from people, we, you know, aren't going to chase people down for reappointments necessarily. There was a couple of outreaches to to him and I guess he's has some issues with technology and whatnot. But, um, you know, I think that I know I reached out to him and I asked to speak on the phone. That never happened. The bottom line is, I think we're in a position where the meetings are taking place remotely. Technology is important to providing services to the town. Our role as selectmen are to make sure that the people that are serving on our boards and commissions are able to do their job well and attend these important meetings. I agree with you that, you know, maybe it is time that we, going forward, begin to really take a look at at everyone on our boards and committees and are there, are they all participating? Are they just placeholders? You know, I, I think that's a valid point. I think with this situation, we didn't hear from Bill. I had reached out to chairman of the Conservation Commission and informed him that we didn't hear from Bill and that there was an opening and that we had a couple of people who were interested and offered that the Concom meet with those folks and and have that conversation of, you know, who would be the best to fill the role. But regardless, we are here where we are. And I think that.
Right, you did reach out to that person and the person said that, then they checked and said that Bill still wanted to be reappointed. And then the decision, it was, it was replied back that the decision would be made by the Board of Selectmen. That, that's actually how it went down. So, look, I make, I make a, a, a motion to reappoint Bill Ayton for the term to expire. I mean, he, he expressed the interest in it. We know if we don't want to, if we don't want, we want to vote it down, go ahead. But that's it's a reappointment, just like anybody else this year. I moved to appoint Bill Ayton to the Conservation Committee for a term that expires 6/30/24.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'm not going to second it only because I don't, I don't know him. I've and I also, I didn't know Sue Cahalan until I just spoke with her tonight or listened to her tonight. I've known Bob Sweet for years. And, you know, he's already deferred to her. And my understanding is that, Mark, you reached out to the the incumbent? And he didn't respond or didn't come on the call or?
I asked to speak with him over the phone and I didn't.
Did you mean you left him a voicemail or?
No, I sent him an email. I said, Bill, I would like to be able to speak with you over the phone. And
So you sent him an email knowing that he might not even have that email available because he didn't respond to any of the other emails.
To me, he responded to me and he said, thank you. How am I supposed to get in touch with them? I mean, I don't want to go down a road that I.
No, but did we do this, did we do this with anybody else that was getting reappointed? You, we did this with nobody else when, when there, I'm sure there's other people that would have liked to fill other seats. Do we, I mean, that's fine. Look, if you don't want to second.
All right. Is there another motion out there?
Yeah, I guess I would make a motion then to appoint Susan Cahalan to the open position. It's a three year term to expire June 2024.
Yeah, second. Further discussion.
I want to add something about this process, but I'll wait till you vote.
Okay. All in favor?
Morali, I.
Real I.
Tenio, I.
Tenio's. Okay.
So a few years ago, I want to say five now is when we actually created this policy about boards and commissions for this exact reason, which was that we weren't getting responses or indications about who wanted to renew or who didn't want to renew or where there were vacancies or if there were attendance and what the process should be. It was kind of just wide open. So it's, it's, it's totally possible that there's flaws in the process because it's our first time having a process for this. And me, I have always been of the mindset that we should be interviewing candidates semi regularly who are on these boards, particularly not because we question their service to the community, but because we do often get other volunteers who might be interested and maybe switching a board, going to a different board is actually beneficial. It, if they want to continue. We have other vacancies. I, I support the long term people that we have, but you all know, we've had a problem in the past couple of years with these boards sort of losing their focus. And I think we should absolutely take a look at this and this policy this year to make sure that these boards know what their actual mission is. Particularly advisory boards to the Board of Selectmen who seem to have strayed quite a bit from that role. And I think it's not because they're doing it willfully. It's because we just haven't actually gone in and sort of shown everyone what their charter is and what they're supposed to be doing on behalf of the town. And so I would love to have boards and commissions be part of a project that we all work on this year.
Right, but just also, and again, Susan, my vote is not anything to do with you specifically. Your resume is great. I think you're going to do a great job and I thank you for volunteering. This is all 100% towards the process that's going on right now because it's actually nonsense. And it's a kick in the face to Bill Ayton, who's been here for God knows, again, I can't even know how long. And, you know, again, just be aware, you know, this is, I just hope we're going to be cautious of how we treat the people. We're having a hard time getting volunteers as it is. And we've talked about this, but yeah, we're kicking people off because they didn't reach us in time, which there was no timeframe. So.
And they're not attending. I mean, frankly, he's not.
Yep, yep, I agree. He did. He missed the meetings. Yep. So that's why, is that why we're doing this? I'm just wondering, you know, I mean, what's, what's the actual reason?
Ultimately, it, it, it was leading up to something I was going to bring up, but then we didn't hear from them. So and then we were back to here we are. So it brought, it was going to have them come in and we're going to have a discussion about it. And then we were going to move forward from there.
I just, all I'm going to say is I have a hard time of motion or seconding somebody I haven't even at least spoken with. And I, I hear everything that you're saying, Lonnie. I, I don't know how it always was. I know that the few times I was reappointed, you know, I, I responded and I was there when I needed to be. And I know two years ago, when, when the select board put this position in place, you know, to have the Board or Committee interview ultimately the sec, select board to a point. Just like, you know, we had Mike Jones show up last week. I know, I know that none of them were incumbents that we were looking at. Plus the same person who's going to be there tonight. You know, for the FinCon, for the other open position, you know, has never been on there before. But I would like to have spoken to him.
I understand. So, all right. So that being said, the process was we reappointed everybody that want to be reappointed. So you spoke to every single person on that list that you had never spoken to before, or you intimately knew every single person on that list? I mean, come on, that, that's what we're saying here.
Are you asking me or?
I'm saying it to you. You said you didn't want to second it because you didn't, haven't had a chance to speak with Bill Ayton, right? But yet.
Yeah, well, everybody.
You reappointed everybody last week on a blanket reappointment.
I'm, I'm pretty sure, but as far as I know, I don't know if the chair reached out to anybody specifically of all the other ones. And I don't know if any of those reappointments, if there was anybody else who stepped up that wanted to be reappointed. Certainly, if there was nobody else who stepped up and there are people who are on the Board of Committee and they want to be reappointed and they responded, that's fine. But that doesn't seem to be the case here. I think what we have is.
It is, it is the case here. He missed getting it to us by a certain point. And then it was decided that we were going to have it be an open seat. Had he, had he replied ahead of time, would be, we even have this conversation. Again, we're just going in circles here. So let's just move.
Well, let me just, let me just say one thing honestly is that I know Bob Sweet did reach out to me whether he knew there was an opening or not. And I told him if he was interested, he should send a letter to the Conservation Commission and to the Select Board. That, that was me telling them that. So.
And so is Susan. It just is, as Mark just said a minute ago, she's been asking for a while to be reappointed. But every year it's been the, I'm sorry, be appointed, but every year the reappointments have just happened. It's never happened another way. So again, this is just a very odd situation.
And that's all I'm saying. Well, all I, again, all I'm getting at is, and not that I'm defending myself, and I know we're just discussing this. That list last week, as far as I know, every one of those people that were reappointed was the only one who applied to be in those spots. I mean, where, does anybody know? Did anybody apply? Because I, I think every position is open until, you know, at the end of the term for a new person to apply. I mean, that, that was always my understanding as a Chair of the FinCon.
Okay.
But anyways, that's just my.
Let's just, the process is straightforward. It's been straightforward. We have had other times when candidates did not respond and then re-interviewed. It has happened before. Okay? It's unfortunate that it happened this time, but ultimately.
Can you give me a list of those, Kim? I want to know exactly which ones they were.
That's why we first started this policy a couple of years ago, because we had some people get reappointed who didn't want to be. They didn't indicate they wanted to. We contacted them. They didn't contact us back. Some of them thought they were, it was a mess. That's how we got here. Okay? So that being said, if there's another vacancy on the Concom in the immediate future, he can interview in return. It's not, since this is not a specific non-reappointment of this person, he could, correct? So and for, and again.
We're just, we're just talking circles and making stuff up right now. Please move on. This is nonsense.
Exists.
All right, now, here we go. Thank you. Chief Kersey, we have an item for you. Where is it? MO, MOA for Ben and Police Union?
I believe we have to go into executive session just to go over it, make sure everything's all right and then come out of executive session, sign that.
All right.
Unless you guys are reviewed and you're comfortable with it without talking about it.
We'll just move on. We'll go back to it. Okay. Move to approve, oh, we got the transfers. We have a couple of new transfers, Kim.
Sure. So I supported you guys a spreadsheet this afternoon. Do you have it? Or have you seen it? Well, um, because the FinCon has not yet approved the transfers, I, and you guys had about a month ago. I've actually just been adding the new transfers to the list and growing the one spreadsheet. So this is the one final transfer spreadsheet that we're going to have for the entire fiscal year unless something else comes up. There's nothing unusual that's on there. It's the things that we see every year. I think I've mentioned before, we were lucky, we were able to cover snow and ice, which is great. And the majority of, we have plenty of money sort of in reserve or leftover because of the strange fiscal year we had because of COVID. So this is straightforward transfers.
All right, questions? Motion?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the FY21 transfers as presented.
I second it.
All in favor?
Tenio, I.
Morali, I.
Real I. Okay. Discuss override. I mean, frankly, not sure I want to discuss anything unless Mr. Tenio or Mr. Morali do until we kind of know what. Mr. Tanyo or Mr. Morales do until we kind of know what Fin, or the school committee is going to do tonight. What do you guys think?
I agree with that.
I'm not sure to say, you know, other than that the override failed and now we're waiting on next step. So are there any questions from the public or from anyone on the meeting that, uh, we want to address? Kim, are we good? Do you have anything?
We're good. I, well, it's seven o'clock now, so I think we need to split to either attend FinCon or to attend the school committee meeting.
Well, I think we should.
Have executive session first, right?
I'd like to get rid of an executive session in the MOA and then after that, do you?
Okay, so just, just so, just so we're going to, we're going to jump in, into executive session, come back to this meeting, right? And then we'll approve the MOA and then we'll jump over to finance committee.
Yes.
Okay. So if anybody didn't want to hang out for the MOA, I, I would just say, wait here, we'll be back.
Correct.
Are you adjourning from the FinCon meeting?
Um,
You mean from the, oh.
No, I think we'll adjourn from this.
Okay.
But hold on, we, I think you don't adjourn from this. We would.
No.
You mean eventually?
After executive session, we'll come back. And then we'll adjourn from our meeting before going to Fin. If you want to go to FinCon, you can. It's not going to, I don't think we're going to have any debate at the FinCon.
We're just there as individuals, not as the board.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, I move into, move to enter into executive session, purpose three, Master on a lot, chapter thirty A, section twenty one eighty-three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Mendon Town Hall Union, Local two seven two, Mendon Highway Department Union, Local two seven two, Mass Coalition of Police Union AFL-CIO, Local one eighty-eight. To discuss an open session may be detrimental to bargaining. We will reconvene into open session.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Tanyo, I.
Morales, I.
Real I.
Just anyone staying in this meeting of the recording is going to stay on. So just, um, just be aware of that. That's all.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you, Sue. Susan.
Be in touch. Thank you.
Okay. Just, just enough again.
Looks like it.
All right. So here, let me see. I move to approve the MOA for the Men and Police Union as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Tanyo, I.
Morales, I.
Real I. Excellent.
I mean, stop. I'm sorry. Um, are we all done? Uh, motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I think that's it.
Second.